All righty, welcome WIFIC, welcome all. The floor is yours.
All righty, well, good evening. As we do with all departments, we offer to help out, to put things in context and perspective. And WIFIC is the first ones who were silly enough to actually let me do this. So, here we go. We're going to try and encapsulate things for you and try and connect policy to presentation and those kind of things with budget coming up. And we tried to do as much of the, let you see as much of the modernization of our logo, both from a city standpoint and from a facility standpoint, and then the things that hopefully will lead into apps, which really are the three business units within WIFIC. So, you're going to see a little bit of everything here today. But I always try to answer the question, why are we here when we do presentations? And if you remember, a couple of weeks ago, in this room, we all got together and we looked at that first image, which is the combination of budget from an action standpoint and from a policy standpoint. So, we're still on the left side of the equation, which is more strategy and trending tonight. So, that is really the content of this presentation. And then that will lead into, after we get after the first of the year, the action side of the equation, which is more the actual physical budget and the capital improvements plan. You have been provided with a meeting packet that includes all of this material wrapped into the three PDF logos you see there. So, you've got the presentation in PDF, you have a quick fact sheet from the rec department, and then you also have the budget to date for the entire facility. So, that's the reference information that if you want to get deeper into it, or just so you can see where we're at this point of the year, which is about a third of the way through the fiscal year. So, our ask of you folks, from a staff standpoint, is to help us update this mission and vision statement for the facility that will lead into the budget and it will help frame up the budget better. And hopefully, everyone will have a better understanding of the various details and departmental functions that go on with WIFIC. So, just like we did with Al and his group a couple of weeks ago, it's the old SWAT thinking, and we're asking for feedback from you folks. Doesn't need to be now, it can be something that you think about over the holidays, and then as we get back together for the fiscal year 2021 budget and CIP. If you can just be prepared to say, hey, look, when I think of WIFIC, here are some key words, here are some of the niche services that you folks provide down there, what about the unique things that we do in this community, and then also some additional branding? So, that kind of sets the stage for what we're asking of you. And the last thing I'm going to leave you with is that WIFIC touches thousands of residents, visitors and customers per year. And if you're around the facility at all, you see that. There's different groups that come in at different times of the day and on the weekends. But wow, that facility touches an awful lot of people. And I think these folks take that very seriously. So, I'm going to get out of the way and hand it over to the subject matter experts. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. I'm Mike Fountain, everybody. I think I know most people here. I'm the hockey director, the ice director at the WIFIC. I'll be speaking everything hockey, ice-related, pro shop, adult hockey leagues, and everything on that side of the building. So, our first slide, just so we know, I started in 2011. Ice rates were $245 an hour. We're up to $295 an hour for prime time, and we're $165 when I started, and now we're up to $185. Prime time is generally 3:00 to 10:00, 3:00 in the afternoon till 10:00 at night. And from September 1st till the end of March is the prime time rates. It's a lot of, it's kind of in line with other rinks in the area. And we see on the right there, biggest users we have, Hawk Hockey, hockey schools that come in and rent ice for us throughout the year and the summer, and of course, the Kennewah Hills varsity team. The Hawk Hockey, I'm going to just click this next slide for you. Here's ice rental revenue from 2015 on. As you can tell, pretty consistent. There's some years, a little bit of a dip here and there. And you've got to remember, if we lose a day of ice, like on a weekend, that's $3,000 or $4,000 of ice. So, if you have the ice storms of last year, or you have some, we took the ice out for a week to rebuild the ice every year. And the Hawk Hockey, to get back to the Hawk Hockey, that's our biggest user. So, with those numbers, they're, we project this year they'll do around $270,000 of ice, which is around 75% of our budget. So, that's our biggest user, and then of course, Kennewah and the other rentals. So, some nice pictures there showing the Mike Jamboree on the left there. The Mike Jamboree, prime example to kind of talk about what Frank said. We had 12 teams from 12 till noon, that's 120 kids, plus their families, plus siblings. Within a two-hour span, we had at least 400 kids in that building, let alone the rest of the day. So, thousand, typical weekend could be 1,000 people through that building, visiting from out of town as well, kind of showcasing our city, which is fantastic. Kennewah Hills and Future Pro Goalie is one of our hockey schools. Clicking over to the next part of the ice revenue is our in-house programs, which is our adult hockey league, our Learn to Skate, Learn to Play, and Cross Ice. Some nice pictures there, kind of showcasing the kids on the ice and stuff. Pretty consistent numbers overall. It's our feeder program for Hawk, and actually, which actually will eventually go into the adult hockey league as well. I personally run these. Not a lot of hockey rinks have their hockey director with my background on the ice with the Learn to Skate, the Learn to Play, and the Cross Ice. And actually, a little slide in the corner of the picture, the Try Hockey for Free. We had 30 kids show up. It's a USA Hockey sanctioned event, and we just kind of blast the information out there, and we had 30 people show up, which was fantastic. So, once again, you know, kind of ebbs and flows. But one thing we do really well with the Walker Ice and Fitness Center, and of course, Hawk Hockey program is we retain, which is hard to do in hockey. People come and they don't leave. Here's just a graph of participation numbers for the last five years. The current, obviously, the current year is still ongoing. That's one session of Learn to Play Hockey. For example, we've had our second, we had another eight or 10 kids. So, those numbers will be pretty well in line with where we'll be with everything else by the end of the year. The Hawk Hockey numbers are our spring league as well as our in-season league. We have a lot of kids. We have a single sheet facility, as you guys know. It's a lot, there's only so many hours. I think we do a pretty good job with that. Just going to skip up participation numbers. The adult hockey league, this is kind of a pretty cool graph, just to show you where we've come in five years. So, 132% growth in participants since 2014, '15, and 140, and to go back to the first slide, which we kind of, the revenue slide, or the previous one there, we had 148% growth in revenue from around $56,000 to $118,000. And that is just due to making more times available in the summer. We have four nights a week with men's league. It's a big, it's a big earner for us. And they're eating up those 10 o'clock at night hours, which are hard to sell. So, it's a really good group we have there. So, that's our participants. And pro shop, sales, cost of goods, and revenue. So, when I took over, and I started in 2011, for those of you that don't know, I took over a pro shop that lost $15,000 that year, and now we're making, you know, $49,000, $50,000 a year. So, how, what did I do to change it? My connections in the area, we do a lot more team sales through high schools, some colleges in the past. Hawk Hockey, prime example with Hawk, once again, being our biggest user. I just billed them for October, $70,000 of pro shop equipment, jerseys, warmups, and stuff like that. So, once again, that's a big user for us, and they, they really help us out get those numbers up there. And that includes, you know, people manning the shop. We've kind of tried to make sure we're not overstaffing that. And I think it turned out, the numbers kind of speak for itself that way. And so, I think that's my last slide right now. So, trying to keep it moving here. If there's any questions or anything, please do not hesitate to ask. And I just want to kind of give you a little synopsis of what we do.
Yeah, I was really curious what you did to increase the adult hockey.
Yeah, so generally what we did, yeah. So, generally what we did was is, we have, we do, this year, actually, we had, only had two tournaments in the summer, because it's, you try to make it work. But we've had three to four tournaments we try to offer in the summer. We make the time. So, on Sunday nights, we have, it starts at 4:00. We have like a 16-team league on a Sunday night, which is crazy. And then our Tues, we have a Wednesday, Friday league, and we just really capitalize on our summer ice. We really push it. We turn away, actually, and Mary K. knows this as well from conversations in the past. A single sheet, we only have so much ice, we have to turn away teams. So, we've probably turned away seven or eight teams this year, and that's difficult. So, once again, promoting it, we run a good quality league. We have a beginner, intermediate, and we do do an advanced, which is kind of more of like a tournament in the summer. We have guys that currently play at Michigan, Mike Canoobles, kind of some ex-pros come. But we, we just, it's just word of mouth. There's a lot of options out there, and people come. And once again, not to tout it too much, but I guess that's kind of why we're here, our facility, people are really drawn to our facility. Quality ice and quality people that work there.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. All right, thanks, everybody, for having me, and we're going to pass the floor over to Mary K.
Thanks, Mike. Hi, everyone. I'm Mary K. Sherbin. I'm the facility director at the Walker Race and Fitness Center. And this is Sandy Van Beek, she's our fitness manager. And we're here tonight to talk about the fitness side of our facility. So, please don't hesitate to ask questions or comments as we go along. So, we're going to start out talking tonight about fitness member statistics. So, who is it that uses our facility? So, as of November 5th, we have 2,210 active members at the gym. These members check in between 6,000 and 9,000 times per month. So, our facility is really being used. 48% of our members participate with the Silver Sneakers, Silver and Fit, and AARP insurance-based programs. Those are for our seniors 65 and older, and they get their membership paid through their insurance. So, we get $3 per visit, up to 12 visits per month for each one of these members. And we have over 1,000 of those currently. 55% of our members are Walker residents. We also have another 23% that come from Grand Rapids area. We also pull from Marne, Cooperstown, Comstock Park areas. The next three charts show, we're comparing our number of our members to our revenues. So, the first chart shows number of active members by month. So, and you can see that each year, every month, we're having more and more members, active members. And then the next chart shows member check-ins by month. Those also are increasing every year, every month. We're having more and more people check in. The bottom chart shows our revenues, and those have stayed steady until the last couple of years. They're now starting to trend downward. So, basically, we have more members checking in more often, yet our membership dues are going down. Now, we kind of knew that this was going to happen when in 2017, we decided to accept the Silver and Fit, which is the additional senior program.
Mary K.
Yes.
Can I ask real quick, when you say active member, what does that mean?
That means that they are, they're an active member at the gym. So, they're either paying, or they're registered with us, not necessarily using it every single day. That, yeah, so active does mean that they're registered there, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, everyone. I'd like to tell you about our personal training, fitness classes, and our equipment. As you can see from the first slide, that the two top revenue at the pers, excuse me, the two top additional revenue at the fitness center are the punch cards and the personal training. We have increased personal training 229% since 2015. Currently, we have three personal trainers that are part-time. They give an awesome attention to their clients, give a safe and effective workout. Currently, we have 14 instructors that teach 52 classes per week, seven days a week. The classes range from low intensity of Silver Sneakers, gentle stretch, to high intensity pulse and cycling. We have approximately 700 people that attend classes each week. Next, you'll see our equipment. The most recent that we have purchased is the new step that is off to left-hand side. This is very familiar with a lot of our senior-based clients that have had any hip knee replacement. So, they have used this before in their facility, or excuse me, in their rehab, rehab, thank you, in their rehab after any type of surgery that they may have had. We also have the stair stepper, which is the next two. We added those in. They have replaced the old ones that we had that have been there for quite some time, and were starting to break down, and there is not any equipment pieces that we could have to keep the old ones, so we had to get new ones. The next one are the rowing machines, which is an upper body and lower body at the same time piece of equipment that anyone can use. Most of the equipment is obviously used by all different age groups.
One of the unique things about our gym is that on any given day, if you look out on the gym floor, you're going to see senior citizens working out alongside heavy lifters, alongside students, moms, families. They're all out there working out together, and they're all getting along, all in the same space. They even help each other out. So, it's a really neat thing to have in our community. Another thing that our gym is known for is its cleanliness, its good selection of equipment, and the fact that it's well-maintained. You are not going to see any broken-down pieces of equipment on our gym floor. So, we really strive to make sure that everybody that comes into the gym and into our facility has a really great experience. That's our fitness side. Fitness side. Does anybody have any questions?
Misses?
Sandy, what do you chart, what's the cost for a punch card and personal training visit typically?
The personal training is $150 for six sessions. And right now, we're actually holding a Black Friday special that we'll be having. And the punch cards, they range different prices. So, during the slow times during the summer months, I actually do a Groupon. And so, the Groupon, that's how the word has been out, and that's how everyone knows about our classes. So, they are able to buy a Groupon and turn that voucher in and get a punch card. And the punch cards, we also have two prices, one $70.
11 classes for $70. And then the senior rate is 11 classes for $40, and seniors are 55 and older that can do those. And those punch cards are good for just the classes, none of the equipment or anything, just taking a class here or there.
And they never expire. So, it's something that someone has it, where they can come and go and.
Some Christmas gifts?
Right, right, exactly, exactly.
All right.
I got one more question.
Sure, sure.
So, I know that you have some, like, physical therapy places come in, or chiropractic or something from time to time. And I was just wondering if we have any, like, affiliate relationships that are ongoing that maybe people are getting referred to the gym for maybe a, you know, is there any, are you leveraging that at all?
Like discount?
Well, just leveraging getting new members in through some of those local.
Yes, Emily that comes in that you might have seen several different times, she comes in and does this evaluation. So, we're sharing business. So, her clients, she has sent over to us when they need additional, when they're beyond that physical therapy, and now they need to maintain, they have come. And so, that has increased the revenue too with our personal training.
Yeah, that's curious about that.
So, we've been handing back and forth the information.
Okay. Thanks.
Great, we're going to hand this over to Sharon and Michelle in the rec department.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sharon, and this is Michelle. And we are going to be talking about programs and events and services that the recreation department offers. Okay. We offer two programs. We offer youth soccer and adult softball. As you can see, the participation numbers have stayed steady over the last five years. We started using the Civic Rec software program in 2017, and Michelle's going to talk a little bit more about that.
Right now, about 70% of our users are using our new software for just online registrations and park rental facilities. Our ultimate goal would be to see that at 100%, hopefully within the next year or two. Some of the highlights that we like about Civic Rec software are that we can send cancellation information, program reminders, we can email and text to any of our participants that are registered with us. The coaches can communicate with their whole entire teams, whether it's about snacks, or change of fields, or whatever they want to communicate with them. And what we've heard the most about, everybody loves that our schedules, all our game schedules can all be found online. So, if they've lost their paper schedule or whatever, people love that they can just quick go online and see that. And this software has really helped our department in many ways.
Okay, through the soccer and softball programs, we communicate with about 1,500 families each year. On this slide are the expenses and revenues for soccer and softball. They have stayed consistent since 2015. And then we just have some slides here showing our programs and events, so I'm just going to explain these. Youth soccer is offered both spring and fall season. We have close to 800 kids ages 4 to 13 that participate. And this spring, we started the four-year-old program. Seems really young, but we had requests for it, and we had 40 kids that registered. And then in the fall, we doubled that to 80. So, that helped our numbers come back up a little bit, and everybody loves it, and they're adorable. Adult softball leagues are offered, men's, women's, and co-ed teams. And we are one of the few communities that still have a women's league. We have six main parks, and then two pocket parks in Walker and park facilities. We are rented, they rent October, April to October. And this year, we added four pickleball courts at City Central Park, and I want to thank the commission for okaying those. The community was really excited to see them completed. And four of our parks will be getting inclusive swings. We were hoping for this year, but might be next spring now. And that won't make all of our parks, they will all have inclusive swings other than the two pocket parks. And thank you, Gary, for pushing that along. And then our senior citizens bowling tournament. We've been hosting this for 28 years at Lincoln Lanes, and we have seniors that participate ages 55, and the oldest is up to age 93. And we have on an average of 140, 140 seniors that participate in the two-day event. And they always have a good time. They know how to have fun. Every year, thousands of kids come to the Easter egg hunt, over 1,000 kids. And we've been doing this for as long as I can remember. In 2018, we started the Bunny Trail for children under two. And a lot of you have volunteered, and you know that age two and under was crazy, crazy with the parents. But we came up with a bunny trail, and they seemed to, that really calmed things down a lot, so that was a good addition. And our event is April 4th next year, so mark it on your calendars if you're available again next year, and that'd be great. Over 65 entries participate in the Memorial Day Parade. We have several veterans groups and local businesses that participate. And of course, one of the highlights, the big highlight, is the plane flyover that starts the parade next year. The parade will be on May 25th.
And speaking of veterans, back in 2017, we started doing a veterans' drive for Veterans' Day. And we just loaded, we're going to be loading up my truck tomorrow morning to haul it to the Grand Rapids home of veterans. We have another truckload full of donations. So, that's, we really enjoy doing this drive because we love giving back to the veterans. It's always fun to go there, and we get to talk with some of them and deliver it, so it's good to give back.
As you can see, the recreation department touches a wide range of people, from babies to seniors on a yearly basis through our programs and events. Does anybody have any questions?
Misses?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're getting a, two more slides from me, and then we'll wrap it up, and then closing questions. So, thanks for your attention. As you know, we're finally getting to the point where the overall city master plan is in rough draft form. So, we're, we're doing a public hearing next Wednesday, I believe it is, or actually, this Wednesday. There you go. So, it's in the, in two days, in this room, and we'll be reviewing the rough draft. It is in rough draft form, but we want to keep this thing moving. So, when that is done, which will be soon, our goal for 2020 is to take the work that we did from 2012 through 2014 for your Parks and Recreation Master Plan and update that and get that formally approved. So, another ask we will have of you folks is that we work together on defining for 2020 and beyond, it's a five-year plan, the typical strategic framework for your Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And the way that we will do that is if we get these groups together, we will follow essentially the same process we've been doing for your city master plan, but from the ground up, we'll build this Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So, expect to hear that in 2020. And a lot of the, the background work was done in 2014, but it will be, will need to be updated. But we're going to ask everybody to work together on that one. And so, if you know anyone who's interested in, from a user group standpoint, let us know, because we want to cast a wide net with this one, just like we have with the overall city master plan. Last slide for me is, we want you folks to know that the Ice and Fitness Center is a capital-intensive operation. So, what we do very carefully is we develop a capital improvement plan for the facility. The building's 20 years old. We have reached out to Train, who is one of your maintenance contractors in the building, and also Fishback, which has been helping us out with the KDL background information to give us a feel for what is potentially in need of updating in the facility, and that lands right on this CIP. So, you will see that again for this coming fiscal year. We'll add another year. We'll see what is still appropriate for year 2021. In your capital sinking fund for WIFIC right now, you folks have around $260,000 just in case. But I think that's something that the city commission has directed us to do with multiple funds over time, is have some reserve money so that you're building towards your capital improvement items. That is all for me. I'm going to get out of the way and let these folks wrap it up. Thank you.
All right, finally, we want to start to thank our customers, our staff, and our volunteers. We currently employ three full-time people and 70 part-time staff, plus seasonal hockey referees, soccer officials, softball umpires. Many of our staff and volunteers help at the city events, participate in wellness expos, and organize collections to give back to the community. We want to thank them all for their hard work and their dedication to the Walker Race and Fitness Center, and we couldn't do it without them. Finally, we want to thank you, the city commission, for your continued support, and we look forward to the future and what that may hold for us. So, thank you. And hopefully, we see everybody at the Winter Fest this year, December 5th is from 5:30 until 7:30, so come on out. Is there anybody that has any questions or anything for any of us?
We'll start to the left. I have some closing comments, and we're all settled and done.
Okay.
We'll start with Commissioner Kent.
Well, it's not really questions, but if it's hockey, or fitness, or recreation, financially, I mean, it's right here in front of us. And the, the fitness center is doing a lot better than it has in years, and we appreciate that. And I've said it for years, and I'm sure people were a better student in school than I was, but I had an exam to take, and I signed my name, turned it in, and was informed that I couldn't finish out the tennis for the rest of the year, so you better put some more down. So, I got in trouble, more trouble later because I took, got the highest mark on it, but, but anyway, if it wasn't for sports, sometimes that helps some of us stay there or do. And I feel that spending our money at this end instead of that end, our kids growing up over the years, it's, it's a good, it's money well spent.
Well said.
I really appreciate, you know, everything that's, that's being done, and you just kindness, keep growing, and it's, it's a good thing to see, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
I'm very impressed with the packet that you put together for us, and I'm really glad that you guys are going for that younger age, those four-year-olds. Funny that you say that, but it begins, it really instills when they're at that age. It gets them out to be active, it gets them away from the TV, it gets them involved in social, you know, it socializes them with other kids, and, you know, that's their job right now, is to play. And you know what? We get, we can reap the benefits. We get, we can reap the benefits of them playing, but they also learn something. They learn how to work as a team, and they learn how to interact with, with some other adult other than their parent with, with having a coach. And they learn what it's like to be a member of something. So I do believe in starting kids as young as you can to be, to learn the value of just being healthier and just being part of an organization of some type. So kudos to you guys. You guys have really done well in the past five years. I've really seen you guys go up the mark, so keep going.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that it's great to see the numbers are going up right now, especially from where that Pro Shop started off to where it's going at now and over the hall, the whole facility.
Thank you.
Commissioners, done this one. Anything else?
Yeah, I just want to say, you mentioned like the multi-generational aspect of the gym, and I, I mean, that's something that I've experienced firsthand, and so I really appreciate that. I think it's a great place to meet with the community and just, you know, get to know people. And, and yeah, like that, like I said, the multi-generational aspect is really nice.
They're like a family out there. And, and even the, the hockey teams, they're like a family. Everybody gets along, for the most part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, one question I have is though, how do you request music?
How do you, you mean, above or? Okay. I'm going to tell you that more and more, that's kind of going out of style because everybody has it on their phones and on their iPods. So, but if you just come up to the front desk, we can, we can change the.
Because, because I find the music in the, in the, in the, the dressing or whatever, you know, it doesn't match the music on the floor.
Yes, that was, that's more of our lobby music that's, that plays in the, there, and then out on the fitness floor, it's a little more.
That's your cooldown music.
Yeah. Well, I find I usually like the music in the locker room better. All right. Duly noted.
Anything else done here?
No question, just a few comments. And I, I think of, it's been a couple of years, I think, when we just, we did some evaluations of where's our strategy going with the arena. I can't say thank you enough for those of, that have been through that with you. We made the right decision. That's a decision that's going to stay, that is a city-owned facility, and, and it's really one of the, the crown jewels that we have as a, as a municipality. From the hockey thing, you know, Mike, I don't, I don't think you give yourself credit due, and I've shared it with you and in front of some others before, but I can't say enough, the quality of teaching and maybe being a hockey dad, the quality of teaching our young boys and girls get and all the way through the high school is second to none in the area. So it's not just the nice facility. Yes, we do have great facilities, and we do hear about that. But we do have, I, I would argue with anybody, the best teaching in West Michigan, maybe on the side of the state. I don't know enough about Detroit, so. But I also too, I want to commend inventory management. There's a point in time where I, I, I think the, the ordering philosophy was order that big, that big order at the start of the year, and that's hope and pray that we can get rid of all this. And I see Dan DeVries nodding his head and the questions I've asked in the, in the area. But I just, the, the fact that you've actually taken that personal outreach to check, to see what's viable and not, it doesn't expose ourselves to that unnecessary inventory year round, and we have to give it away just to get rid of it. So I just, so many good things here. I would much rather have you on the ice, but the inventory management piece has been phenomenal, the improvement. So thank you to our fitness folks. The part, I think for all of us up here, I think I can speak for, for each one, the fact that for our Silver Programs and AARP, forty-eight percent of our people are using it. I think to Commissioner Kent's point about either we get them over here, if their kids are over there, for us, I think it's two, it's the medical calls we may get if they're not getting out and being active. So the fact that that is a, such a substantial part of our program just kind of reaffirms what our purpose is with that ring, that it's a community center for people to, to stay healthy, and I think the whole community benefits from that. Fitness classes, one of the things we're going to see coming up with the new library is that talk about adding rooms on to accommodate that growth because there are, you know, fourteen instructors, I think it was the number, seven hundred plus per week using those programs.
Sandy's classes have forty, and we're getting to fifty-plus in that little room. So we're going, looking to add more classes on for that.
And when we can attach a revenue number to that, it's pretty simple math, I, I, I think long-term. And then I do have one, I had one question. Any original equipment do we have left on the fitness floor? And I probably should know this. Okay.
Our Cybex equipment is all the original. The weight-resistant training equipment, all that weight equipment is all original.
Which from a technology standpoint, yeah.
Yeah.
Little bit, but, okay. Good, thank you.
And some of the cardio equipment too is still the original. Still.
Yeah, technologies.
Still working, but maybe, you know.
And I think that goes to the point of the set aside that, that Frank spoke to him, and then investment we continue to make, and Dan holds us to that, kind of that, that if we want to buy it, we have to put away for it. So, and then my last thing for the fitness staff is just the creativity. There's three things that, that jump out to me. One is the new types of programming that have taken place the years I've been in office, the use of social media, that's really relevant, and it attracts people's attention and kind of gets them involved to a point, so nice job there. And then I think the other two is the affordability for everyone that comes in that door, you know, the Black Friday specials. I mean, we're trying to be creative to make it where cost is not a barrier for them being able to use it, and we don't want that to ever be the case. So, so that's a fitness. The rec department, when did we implement that new software? Was it a year or two years ago? Two years ago? I know a hundred percent's an admirable goal, but gosh darn it, two years to get to seventy percent. We were wondering how much people were going to use it. To get to seventy percent this quick, just great job there and taking advantage of that. And then the other thing I think warms all of our hearts, especially this time of year, a lot of the recognition is the, it's not just partnerships with the veterans, but it's the other sub, parts of the community as well, but veterans stick out. So just all in all, great job, everybody. I know I speak for the commission. This is one of these things that we just, it's, we know it's not on autopilot because you're doing so many things behind the scenes, but we appreciate the efforts because it's not something we really have to sit there and worry about. So thank you. And, and we do know, I'll acknowledge, that there are going to be some capital expenditures we're going to have coming up here, whether they're mentors units or what have you. They're, they're coming, we know it, and that's why we started putting money away for it. So, thank you much, and unless, Darrell.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Frank for helping them out with the presentation, and our whole staff here did an awesome job, and Dan DeVries quietly behind the scenes, keeping us on the straight and narrow, doesn't get a lot of the credit for a lot of the stuff that happens, and for Shannon's assistance in, in helping them out on the HR and a lot of the personnel items, Kendra helping out on the PR. It's kind of really, really a team effort, but here's the core right here doing an awesome job. So thanks to everybody.
Source of pride with our community, so thank you.
Thank you.
I think we can probably cut them loose if we're good. I know you don't want to sit through the rest of this, so. Thank you.
Again, thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you for bringing the security tonight too, Mike.
You said I'm talking about getting them active and stuff, and they're going to.
That's the quietest I've ever heard of. That's pretty good.
Super good.
Oh, good, thank you all. All right, staff reports. Any questions, comments, observations on those before we jump on to Commissioner and managers' comments? Going once, going twice? All right, I'll start to the right. Madam Clerk, any comments, things for the week?
Nope, nothing, just working on business license renewals and kind of working on getting approvals for all of our March ten presidential primary, getting into that. We had a forms committee project in Lansing with lots of changes to forms that we're working on and changing our P L to get rid of that.
Okay, good.
It's going to be a busy election year.
Yes, it is.
Ready to be in the press.
Yep.
That's, that's the best.
Yep, for good, for good reasons. Yes, for all good reasons.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Gilbert?
Yeah, so our assistant city manager had referenced the upcoming master planning meeting, so I hope all of you will make an effort to be out there. We've got a very long rough draft that I have been peeling through, and it is quite the, quite the bear of a document. So if you haven't had a chance, take a look at it. Lot of important stuff in there for all of us and the future of the city. Be interested to see what the feedback we get is from the public. Only meeting that I think I had over the duration of the absence was Planning Commission. We had the Grand Rapids Butterworth Compost Yard come in for an additional discussion on their facility and something that I have reached out to them about, and I know Commissioner Glanville mentioned it when she was at our Planning Commission meeting, is getting the citizens of Walker access to that yard, since it does lie within the city's boundaries. So that is something that we're certainly working on and hoping to pursue a little bit, see what that looks like for us, and see if that's a possible outcome from that discussion that we've had. Other things, Boy Scouts came back for an amendment to their site. Again, just a wonderful facility, so everyone should look to check that out. We did have a discussion on mine reclaim, mine reclamation as well. A lot of our city's mines are starting to get to that point where we're thinking about what's next for those, and that's an active discussion that, you know, if you guys have feedback, certainly more than willing to listen and hear some thoughts on how we move through that process. And that should be it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Glanville?
Yeah, I was at a traffic committee meeting last week, I think it was. Not too much going on, but some interesting things, you know, people, the two biggest requests are traffic calming in a way, right? Traffic signals or people often request putting in speed bumps or something like this to calm traffic on their side streets. So just some reminders in that area of how that process works. You know, we partner with MDOT to really do, you know, the traffic studies and collect the data that we need to meet the thresholds for putting in left turn arrows and things like that. And so that's consistently monitored, and we're not always in a position to make those decisions, of course, on our own. And then with the traffic calming piece, people often ask for speed bumps, which, you know, we have to remember too, how that affects the city equipment, the DPW, you know, as they're doing the plowing and things like that. So looking at alternatives of how we can do some traffic calming and what that looks like. And one of those that was mentioned was pedestrian, putting in, you know, additional sidewalks because if people can see sidewalks and see pedestrians, they tend to drive more slowly. So it kind of goes hand in hand with what we talked about with the sidewalk piece a couple of weeks ago. So I just thought, you know, it's kind of worth mentioning, people often ask us also to check their feeling, again, as people are speeding through their neighborhoods, and it's interesting to have learned how the state handles changing speed limits. Some of you are aware of that. So sometimes it's better not to ask for the speed limits to be adjusted because they often will go in the wrong direction. So, anyway, just work that we're constantly going through, and I wanted to share some of those oversight, you know, overall items with that. Other than that, I think that's, that's all I've really been at with the city. I was at a interesting panel discussion a week ago or so over in Kentwood. One of the commissioners there hosted a panel discussion around homelessness and city development planning, which was really interesting. They had representatives from Dwelling Place, the ENTF, Emergency Needs Task Force was there, and so quite a few really good input, really good discussion. And I had the opportunity to talk about the value of our, of Mitch, Mitch Arkema, our community liaison officer, because one of the ways that I've been able to make connections with our lower-income residents is through those community policing efforts because they know our community the best. People tend to come, you know, they trust them, so they come to those meetings, and it's a nice way to meet, you know, some of our residents and have some of those conversations. So I was able to talk about us a little bit and suggest that to people over on the region that, you know, they, they should partner with their community liaison officers to help understand their community a little bit better. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilbert?
I just want to relay a big thank you to the DPW for the snow plowing job last Monday. I had a friend who lives over on the East Belt Line or off the East Belt Line and works across from the Humane Society. She had a treacherous drive all the way here till she got to the Fruit Ridge exit. She got to the Fruit Ridge exit. Roads were great. She saw one of our plows on Three Mile. She was like, Walker's great. So I really, really appreciate the job that they do. Went to an event this noon, I'll let Gary talk more about that, for Flexco. It was a really nice, a nice event and great to learn about all the, the jobs and innovation that they're going to be bringing into, into Walker. Really glad that they chose Walker.
Good stuff. Thank you. Commissioner Isaac?
I had a ZBA meeting last week. It was, it went good. There was one withdrawal for a plot of land that does not have access to city water or city sewer. So they actually were able to withdraw it due to the fact that they have a easement from the city of Grand Rapids to put in sewer to it. And then the other one was for, they're putting new silos in for this.
Profile films?
Profile films, yep.
I just want to make a comment to Commissioner Glanville. Traffic meeting, I do agree with Eric Johns regarding that light at Kenny and Remembrance. I think it should be on twenty-four, seven.
Yeah, there, we're aligning, we're kind of going through and, and setting more of our lights, so our lights are on the same timer, more or less. So I believe that's going to be bumped to midnight. Twelve to five, I think, is, is where it's going to be flashing. So, but, and that's more in line with where the rest of our lights flash, so trying to get that more standardized.
That's a great idea, because I know that there's been some residents that work second shift or third shift, and when they come through, sometimes it's, it's just a bad angle. So it made sense, and I was happy to, to read about that. And then I also this, last week, had a youth commission meeting with the adults, and we're putting together more robust bones to this committee, and I think we're going to invite the mayor at the next one to get some, some ideas. And I know that we've had some other commissioners' inputs, and I greatly appreciate that. But, and I was very sad to learn that Dan Powers is leaving us, so really sad. Those are going to be some really big shoes to fill, so that's all I have.
I like being towards the end. On Commissioner Gilbert's comments about the mines and stuff, you know, years ago, they opened a mine and they went to mining. Now, then come along, we got to have a plan for the end. Well, the end keeps getting longer and longer and further away, the economy up and down and everything else that goes with it. And so by the time they're going to get close to the end, things have changed so much, so. You know, and it's a good thing to review that and look at that, I think, and that's a good thing to do. And as far as the speed bumps, in my opinion, the worst thing in the world, the best thing I read in a police report was the forty-seven speeding tickets they wrote, and the police are all going to the state for getting recertified in their radar because of the changes that have been made. And, you know, the more, if they can spare somebody out there running radar, it used to be the Walker stalkers. And, you know, you get in people's wallets, they'll slow down, so. That's, they hear better that way than they do with a speed bump or anything else because they'll try to figure out how to, how to make it work at a higher rate of speed than what was planned. And as far as Monday, Veterans Day, I went to the VFW down here in Wilson for their ceremony, and it was a very nice ceremony in that what was, you get in there and they had Kent County Sheriff's Department along with Grand Rapids Police, and they have a horse there. They have us, from little kids on up, as the day progressed, they start out with the little ones, there were scouts and Boy Scouts and, and, but they had this horse there, and they told about the different things that the horse had done in the war and, and how they used them and everything. You had a lot of veterans there that had displays of different things from way back to the canteens to the old walkie-talkies and radios. And so the next thing you know, there's three buses pull up, and this group goes, and next thing, here come three more buses, and they unload, and, and they had programs for all those kids. And it was really, really a good thing to see and, and really a nice program they put together.
That's good stuff. Thank you.
And I enjoyed it, listening to the, some of the stories. I'm done, Frank.
You are done. Okay. I have two quick items. You are done, okay, I have two quick items, as a cap on the overall rough draft, as if that thing wasn't large enough, keep in mind that this is a 20-year document, and your staff takes it very seriously, not only because you folks implement that thing on a daily, weekly basis, it's also a historical document for the city. So, what I'll be sending out to you folks is a historical review that we put together from 1956 through now, that will show you the progression of master planning from Walker Township into the city of Walker through today, so I'll send that out to you folks as well. We're still working on where that's gonna fit in the actual document, I would prefer that somewhere as like an intro, but it's pretty interesting to see how things have evolved and how ideas have changed over time as Michigan has evolved. And then unfortunately, yes, we are losing Dan Power, he's been here four and a half years, and if you recall, when we hired him, we hired him right out of grad school essentially, and committed to him for a five-year mentoring program, so he's almost up on that five years, and he's come a long way, he's done great things for the city, and we're definitely gonna miss, miss what he's done, he's really built a lot of structure from a planning and zoning standpoint. The flip side of that is, thank you for allowing us to build the Human Resources Department, because as soon as I found out that Dan was leaving, I said, that's a terrible thing, but I understand, you know, he's native to the east side, I went right into Shannon's office and said, we need to get that posting out there, and it was a very quick process of updating the position description and updating the posting and getting that out with Kendra and our variety of other mechanisms through planning associations quickly, and so, because you folks have committed to developing our HR capabilities, we were able to turn that around very quickly, and I'm already hearing back from quite a few people who have questions about the position, so thank you for that, and that's all I have.
Can you put chapters in that book, you've been writing that 502 pages.
Yes, it is, it is divided into books, and my guess will be that no one outside of a few of us will ever read the whole thing, but if something comes up in the Alpine area, you'll pull that book out, and that'll be the reference document for City Commission and Planning Commission. Standale, Northwest Side, South Walker, same thing, and it'll be wrapped in a lot of data. And then the appendices is where we'll have all the verbatim comments that we've received from all the public networking and the public outreach, so it's gonna get even larger, but, yeah, but it'll be, it'll be referenced, and that's why it's still a rough draft, if you're looking for something, you'll be able to keyword search it, or it'll go by book, which will go by part of the city, and I don't expect you to read the whole thing.
Dan, what page are you on?
Eighteenth. I'm not always focused, you talk about painting, right? Where do you need to go?
Have that done by Wednesday, too. Just a couple of things regarding DPW, they did an awesome job, as Melanie said, on Monday, it was really, for the amount of snow we had, it used a lot of salt, it was a tough snow because it was so greasy of a snow, and the ground was warm, so every time it thawed, it refroze, so, yeah, they used about as much salt, I think, on that event as they would have in a January, you know, 12-inch snowstorm event, and it was like that everywhere, county had the same, same issues going on, but, yeah, those early ones are a little tough on those guys, but they did do an awesome job. Kind of other staff related, I don't have his name yet, but we have hired an IT director, so he will be starting beginning of December, so, and that is all finalized, and they have everything set, I will pass that on, but, yeah, so we gained one and we lost one, so unfortunately...
With some municipal background.
Yes, yes, very well qualified, so he will be an awesome addition to the city, so that's coming up as well.
Yep.
And then, I sent an email out last week, late last week, about the UAB and the utility rates, so again, if you were, needed a cure for insomnia, you could have read some of that stuff along with the 500 pages of Master Plan, but, I do have the folks, some of the staffs from Grand Rapids coming on the December 9th meeting to just kind of explain that at a high level of how the whole UAB system works, it's been several years since we've had them here explaining how the rates are developed for sewer and water, and how we're a partner with Grand Rapids and the other communities, we're a retail customer, they also have wholesale customers, so it's really a complicated process that they go through to set the water rates, and a lot of factors go into that, some of which, or a lot of it, which is maintaining the system and the infrastructure that's in place, so, so I think Molly and maybe Eric DeLong will be here on the 9th to kind of give you a high-level overview of how that works and answer any questions you might have on that, so, that'll be helpful. And then just a couple of upcoming dates, obviously, the Winter Fest is coming up on the 5th, I think we, Shannon sent something out a while back about our employee years of service luncheon awards are December 11th, that's a Wednesday, at the Wifick lunchtime, so if you can make that, appreciate that, the staff always likes to have commission there if you're available. And then, we're just finalizing right now, there was mention of the library and Wifick and some of the additional spaces, so we're finalizing with Fishbeck, who's helping us out on the Space Need Study of coming up with a visioning session for really the community and/or seniors, kind of the next target group, and we're right now looking at December 10th as a potential date to hold that visioning session, and that'll be at the License and Fitness Center, we're looking at probably doing two sessions over there, one over around the noon hour, so we can capture some of the seniors after their classes while they're there, and then again later, later in the day, early evening, probably 5 to 7 timeframe, so we're still working out the details and what the format of that will be, but, definitely on that date if you're available, that'll be our, kind of our, letting the community know what we've done to date and getting some feedback, so we can continue on and get to some, you know, some good decisions and direction on that as far as a potential plan moving forward, so, I think that's it, thank you.
Four quick things, I'll open with thank you Commissioner Kent, usually when it comes to the veterans things, and I can't, normally if it's non-stuff, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Gilbert covered for me at the Boy Scouts as I was out of town, and then I was at a State, Veterans Day, Commissioner Kent covered for me, very graciously, and I think you'll hear, I think to Dan's point about the, the school buses coming in, there is a newer director down there, Activities Director, and I forgot the exact title, she lives over off of Kenny, and I've spent a little time with her, and I'll actually be bringing her name for a recommendation for addition to the Community Engagement Committee, had breakfast with her early last week, and, or sorry, the week before, and she is definitely somebody that's very passionate about the city and all the good things, but she's trying to capture those kids at the earlier ages, so, look for more, I think, coming from the, from the Legion Group there. Fruit Ridge update, obviously, forwarded the email, not the best of those, or she sent the email, I do, I think if nothing more, want to thank city staff for the perseverance and commitment to getting us through, getting us through this again, we are going back at it hard, we don't have the date set with DOT or MDOT yet, but they're more than willing to help us out, and I think one of the tells with that is, there was not a single project in Michigan that was granted, and there was actually only one in Ohio, if you look at the list, so, I think this part of the country tends to be a little bit cyclical, and we just got, this part of the country got zeroed out this year, so, but if nothing more, you see Scott around, see Travis, I mean, there's been a lot of work put in from our managers as well, that wasn't just something that we kind of cobble-patch together, there's a lot of work that goes into it. The Flexco groundbreaking that Commissioner Gilbert shared about today, for, thanks for those able to make it, and our clerk was there as well, what a neat business, and I had shared in my comments there today, you know, they started in 1907, they have never laid somebody off due to business conditions, and to go that many years, for 100-plus years, and continue to grow and go into other countries, it's just, it's a very stable business for us, and I was talking with their CEO a week, two weeks ago, and I just learned more about the company, and one of the things that I found out was their diversification, that they're not just so reliant on, say, an auto industry or food service or something, that if the economy takes a swing in the wrong direction for that vertical, that it impacts these workers, obviously with us, with the income tax, and those workers were very reliant on that, so, again, just a very stable, very consistent business, very ethical business, and excited, but I can't wait to see what that building looks like, we were standing afterwards, they just looking out at the size of the hole, the dirt that's being pushed there, it is nuts, to think, if you think the Falk Building is, you know, big, you put two of those side by side, and they're talking, I mean, there's a good another 200,000 to 300,000 square feet of potential expansion that they've bought land for to prepare, so, they've made their home in Walker, politic'd a little bit to get the Downers Grove headquarters moved up here, we'll see how that goes over time, but, last thing was, just a moving piece, little bit on social media about it, was, there was a Veterans Day ceremony on Tuesday at Lincoln Square, I was back in town, and I was able to join that, and our former Walker Mayor Bob Brunner, that was mayor from 1974...